I don't have my gavel, but I will call the June 26th work session for the comprehensive plan to order. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Granger.
Here.
Mr. Boswell.
Here.
Mr. Clea. Ms. Macbeth.
Here.
Mr. Edwards.
Here.
Mr. Schaller.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Well, thank you all for coming. Today is our opportunity to have a business public forum. This session will follow as a corollary to what we did in the fall for neighborhoods where Carolyn has mapped out the city into eight different districts for business opportunity, and we will be looking at them in order. Just some sort of ground rules for this afternoon. We have eight districts in a nominally a two-hour meeting, so we will go through them in order. If a single district has a surplus of comments, I guess, to be had, we will truncate that discussion at 15 minutes to move on to the others, and as time permits, we will come back to anything that has been left hanging. But without any... And there's... I saw some people filling out speaker cards. If you can designate which area of the city you wish to speak to, I'll call you in turn as we go forward on that. Otherwise, I'll turn this over to Carolyn, who will give us a brief presentation and then moderate our forum.
All righty. I want to thank everyone for coming today. Just a little background, we sent out just under 500 notices to the businesses in the city. It's been on our Facebook. We've posted on our webpage. It's been on Twitter. It's been on a lot of different places. And how I plan on doing it today is I have one slide for different sections of the commercial corridor section of the city. And basically, what I'm going to do is pull that slide up, briefly go over the comp plan and the zoning, and both of them are on that one slide, and then open it up for the public to comment. So we'll get started with the Upper Richmond Road. And this is a slide of Upper Richmond Road, which is basically from Bypass Road, and most people will notice that from the start in there by a Chipotle, up to the city line, which is up by La Totka. As you can see on the left-hand side is the comp plan designations. The comp plan designates the red section, which is the commercial section, corridor commercial, and we also have an economic development section, which is the brown that you can see on the left slide. On the right slide is the zoning, and the zoning for that area is B2 and ED2. So in the corridor, commercial land use is a category that is located in the city's heavily traveled entrance corridors for commercial and service uses primarily oriented to the automobile. It applies to local shopping areas, hotels, restaurants, and other tourist-related uses and retail uses, as well as automobile-oriented uses. To ensure high-quality development, the more intensive commercial uses shall be allowed with a special use permit. Corridor commercial is intended to promote the city's economic development policy for its limited, remaining, highly-visible commercial sites. The economic development section, which is the High Street that you see on that slide, is a land-use category intended to encourage economic development activities that provide desirable employment and enlarges the city's tax base. The B2 district, some uses that are allowed in there, I won't name them all, are things such as retail, office, restaurants, hotels, motels, banks, fitness centers and studios, medical office, convenience stores with gas, theaters, to name just a sum of them. Special use permit uses are multifamily, townhouses, car washes, contractor establishments, microbrewery, distilleries, winery, cideri, mini-storage, auto sales, and repair uses and parking garages. In the ED2 district, we allow multifamily, townhouses, banks, conference centers, hotels, motels, restaurants, and retail. Uses requiring a special use permit are limited to manufacturing, retail sales establishments exceeding gross-floor area of 100,000 square feet for an individual tenant, and warehouses, storage, and distribution centers. So that's all I have to say about Upper Richmond Road. I do not have any cards, comment cards here or speakers' cards for anyone on Richmond Road, Upper Richmond Road. If you would like to comment on that, feel free to come to the mic and provide your comments. All righty, moving on. Midtown. This is Midtown, which is bordered by Richmond Road from Bypass Road to Brook Street and from Monticello Avenue to Trayvon to Mount Vernon. And you can see Mount Vernon, it's the area across from the School of Education. On the right is the zoning, and the zoning is B3. And you'll see, this also includes the Arts and Cultural District, which you'll see as a mixed-use area on the comp plan, and on the right it's LB2. I'll briefly go over the LB2 information. This urban commercial land use is a category that is designated the city's most urban commercial corridor along Richmond Road between Monticello Avenue and Bypass Road and along Monticello from Richmond Road to Trayvon Drive. Because the urban commercial area is located close to the downtown in William and Mary, this area has a high potential for future major redevelopment as a mixed-use area with housing and commercial uses. Uses in the area are similar to the corridor commercial without the automobile uses, such as car sales and services and many storage. The mixed-use area, which is the Arts and Cultural District area, is a land-use category intended to provide a degree of flexibility in land uses to be developed in areas suitable for a mixture of residential and commercial uses. Incorporating a potential range of residential office and moderately scaled commercial uses, mixed-use development should be subject to a thorough urban design review, which stresses quality architecture, proper building siting, and well-designed landscaping. Equally important, this category should promote the preservation, revitalization, and adaptive reuse where appropriate of existing housing structures. The LB2 uses allowed are single-family residential, duplex hotel and motel with 10 rooms or less, offices, restaurants with no drive-through windows, offices, medical offices, retails, and et cetera, and buildings less than 10,000 square feet. This area does not also allow drive-throughs. The SUP requirement in the LB2 allows multifamily, townhouse, daycare, radio and broadcast stations, and uses in buildings with gross-floor area exceeding 10,000 square feet that I mentioned previously. The ED district, I mean the B3 district, I just want to point out that we just had a major redevelopment of the Midtown Row, which is over $100 million worth of redevelopment, and that's going to be a mixed-use project with apartments and retail and commercial on the first floor. And the first part of the shopping center's been done and it's been landscaped. The back portion is looking to be started probably sometime in August. So we'll see all four buildings and the parking structure go up about the same time. So with that, I'll open it up for comments on Midtown. I don't have any comment cards, but if anybody would like to come up and speak on Midtown, feel free to do so. All righty, moving along. Downtown. This slide is the downtown area, which consists of Merchant Square extending north across the railroad tracks to the Governor's End, south to Mimosa Drive, and west along Richmond Road to Virginia Avenue. In this area, you can see in the comp plan, there's downtown commercial, which is the pink color on the slide, the mixed-use, which is the brown color, and on the right, the corresponding zonings are B1, LB1, RDT, and I'll briefly go over what those entail. The downtown commercial land use category is intended to promote a variety of businesses, uses in the downtown planning area, and includes Merchant Square and other predominantly retail businesses adjacent to the historic area in William and Mary. Continuent use and adaption of residential dwellings is supported in the downtown area, and residential uses are allowed at a base density of 14 dwelling units per net acre, with an increase of density allowed with a special use permit. The primary consideration for the approval of increased density should be how the scale and character of the proposed project relates to its immediate surroundings and to the downtown planning area as a whole. This category is implemented by B1 zoning district and by the PDC College District for student dwellings with up to four unrelated persons per dwelling unit. The mixed-use area is a land-use category intended to provide a degree of flexibility in land uses to be developed in areas suitable for a mixture of residential and commercial uses. Again, that incorporates a potential range of residential office and moderately scaled commercial buildings, as I stressed previously in the Midtown. So with that, I'll open it up for downtown, and I have, I believe, one speaker for downtown, Kathy Alport.
Good afternoon. I'm Kathy Alport. I live at 115 Motoka Court. I'm not a business owner, and I should preface my remarks by saying that I do not live in an architectural review-designated neighborhood. But I would like to comment on the application of architectural review standards. I think there might be a double standard. Some of our newest business establishments in downtown looks as if there were little architectural review of their exterior and street sides. I am not sure that a house in a designated architectural review area neighborhood would have gotten away with some of the changes that we have seen recently downtown. For instance, and this is just the newest, I don't mean to be picking on one business in particular, the business that has gone into the former post office, which is right next to the restored area. Also, hopefully, number two item, that in the... With the newest administration of Colonial Williamsburg, the city can work together with Colonial Williamsburg to fill some of the vacant spaces that belong to Colonial Williamsburg, such as the one obviously left when Bins left. And then, a more general comment, our neighborhoods, as you hear frequently, are being besieged by many, many factors. We should try to protect them, and I hope that in your job as planning commission members, you will keep that in mind in all of your deliberations. As an example, before the Arts and Cultural District, there was the Williamsburg Heights neighborhood, and it's still there. It still exists. And so, again, as you go through each of these areas over the years of your assignment, I hope that you will carry out your responsibilities, keeping the neighborhoods in mind as well as the businesses. Thank you.
Anyone else? Northeast Triangle. The Northeast Triangle, basically in the comp plan you'll see is corridor commercial, the red, which is Capital Landing Road. You'll also see down towards the bottom, the Second Street section of it, which has Second Street and Penniman Road. And you'll also see on Penniman Road, there's a small mixed-use area that is currently vacant, that is adjacent to the train tracks. Again, I'm just going to... Since I have the most speaker cards on this section, I'm going to review the corridor commercial again. It's basically a land-use category that is located in the city's heavily traveled entrance corridors for commercial and service uses oriented toward an automobile. To ensure high-quality development, the more intensive commercial uses require special use permit. Corridor commercial is intended to promote the city's economic development policy for its limited, remaining, highly-visible commercial sites. Mixed use is intended to provide a degree of flexibility in land uses to be developed in areas suitable for a mixture of residential and commercial uses. It incorporates a range of residential office and moderate-scale commercial uses. Mixed use should be subject to, again, as I mentioned previously, a thorough urban design to include landscaping, architecture, and proper building siting. The B2 district, which is Second Street and Penniman Road area that you see on the zoning map over there, allows retail, office, restaurants, hotels and motels, banks, fitness centers, studios, medical office, convenience stores with gas, theaters, to name some of the typical uses. With a use permit in B2, uses are multifamily, townhouse, car wash, contractor, microbrewery, distillery, winery, cideri, mini-storage, auto sales, and repair, and parking garages. The B4 section, which is Capital Landing Road, allows banks, convenience stores, culinary arts such as restaurants, bake shops, microbreweries, cideries, and so forth, daycare centers, hotels and motels, and museums and art galleries and retail. SUP uses in the B4 district are residential in construction with new development and redevelopment at the 1/3 to 2/3, which is 1/3 commercial to 2/3 residential for the gross-floor area, garden centers, office buildings over 50,000 square feet, rooming facilities for exchange visitors, and tourist information centers. This district does not allow many storage automobile-type uses that are allowed in the B2 district. So with that, I will call the first speaker, which is Bob Gennaro.
I'm Susan Gennaro, 220 Surrey Drive, Brandywine, and I am one of eight Brandywine residents that are here today concerned about particularly Capital Landing Road. We understand that there will be plans seemingly within five years to develop a streetscape and to begin commercially developing Capital Landing Road, and we are here to say that we're for it. It's the pace, not the plan, that we are concerned about. In fact, we would like to see the plan options. We understand there will be several streetscape options that will be available for discussion, and Brandywine, and I assume other neighborhoods along that corridor, would wish to participate. We also are concerned about the type of commercial development that will go in there. We, of course, are for the culinary district, and I even have had a few neighbors going around trying to encourage businesses to apply to the city in our eagerness to get this going. We feel we have been a stepchild to the city. We feel that other parts of the city have captured your attention, and yet this is an entrance corridor, and important, we think, for the commercial well-being of the entire area, as well as an area that is our neighborhood and an area that we would like to develop into a walkable community to enhance property values and to enhance quality of life. So it is the pace that we urge you to quickly attend to. We would like to see options as soon as possible, and we intend, as a Brandywine community, to be involved in providing input to you and to the city council to guide the way, hoping that within three to five years we actually see the walkable community that we so envision. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Bob Gennaro, 220 Surrey Drive, in the Brandywine subdivision, and I too want to reiterate the pace of Capital Landing to Major Corridor into Colonial Williamsburg. We also want to put to your attention, which you know, basically from Merrimack Trail and Capital Landing South, there is a ton of real estate that the city has purchased. And slowly, it's being developed, potentially with a fire station, with a gas station, which really doesn't excite me that much, but I think a lot of really interesting things could be developed up and down Capital Landing Road, which would entice people, tourists, to come into our area, to walk maybe from the Colonial Village and have restaurants and an artsy district, a walkable district, a bike lane. All we want to do is see that section of town look presentable. Right now, it had a bunch of old hotels, motels. We do have a brewery now, which is great, but I think there's just so much room for development. Of course, you need people to want to move there, and I think... I'm not sure what comes first. Do we develop the area first with the road so that businesses can see what it's going to look like, or do we need to get businesses first before you can develop the road? I guess that's what the planning commission is supposed to do. But once again, we in Brandywine kind of feel like a stepchild because we have 78 homes in our community, and we think that there's tremendous opportunity, and now that the city owns the majority of that land, we hope to see something within a certain pace develop so that it becomes a much more enjoyable community for us. Thank you.
Okay. I have Deborah Cobb.
Good afternoon. I'm Deborah Cobb, and I live at 100 Shandale, also in the Brandywine community. I am to reiterate what the Gennaros have said. Gentlemen and lady, it's our turn. We have been patient. We have waited. It's our turn. Please, we beg you, pay attention to us. We are excited about being part of the... Right in the borderline of the Culinary Arts District, we are also... This corridor is going into the city of Williamsburg off of I-64 and 143. We lead in... Capital Landing leads into Page, which leads into Colonial Williamsburg. Our neighborhood of 78 homes is less than one mile from Colonial Williamsburg. So I beg you, please, pay attention to us, hear what we're saying. Again, pick up the pace. Thank you so much.
That's all the speaker cards I have. Has anyone else like to come up and say a few words? Seeing none, I'll move on to York Street. And I moved York Street away a little bit because it was just too much. You couldn't get it all on one slide if you kept it on the Capital Landing Road, Second Street side. So York Street, basically on the left-hand side, you'll see it's corridor commercial, and it's corridor commercial from basically Confusion Corner to the city limits, which is Bassett Motel. On the right, you'll see the zoning classification, which is B2, and it's B2 for that whole strip except for the RM2 section, which is the apartments in the middle there, and there's the other apartments at the corner of York Street and Quarter Path Road. I won't go back through the corridor commercial. I think I've said it two or three times unless someone needs more information, but I don't have any speaker cards on that section. Would someone like to come up and talk about that section of town? Seeing none, I'll move on. Quarter Path. Quarter Path Riverside is what most people would know it. On the left-hand side, the comp plan designates that area as economic development, and the zoning corresponds to that as to ED, which is economic development. Economic development land use is intended to encourage economic development activities that provide desirable employment and enlarges the city's tax base. The economic development land use, this category is implemented by the ED district and the ED2 district for Quarter Path, it's own ED, and ED is to ensure that the majority of economic development land is developed for tax-generating, commercial, entertainment, office, and medical uses. Areas used exclusively for residential use should be limited to a minority of the land use in each of the economic development areas designated by the plan. Residential density is allowed up to 10 dwelling units per net acre, with up to 12 dwelling units per net acre in the ED2. So that's Quarter Path Riverside. As you can see on the right, the hospital is located in that area, and we have our apartments and townhouses behind the apartment buildings currently under construction. If anybody would like to come up and talk about Riverside, Quarter Path? Seeing none, I'll move on. Jamestown Road and Wright 199. This area is basically the commercial corridor area that you have at the corner of Jamestown Road on three sides, and the office area that you have on the remaining side. It's in the LB4 district, and the B2 districts are the two zoning classifications. The office land use category accommodates primarily offices and financial institution as low-density transitional uses between residential neighborhoods and higher-intensity business uses. This land use is intended for outlying areas such as Strawberry Plains Road, John Tyler, Monticello Avenue, and Capital Landing Road. The basic permitted uses are offices and financial institutions. Residential uses are not allowed. To supplement the permitted office uses, convenience service establishments such as barber shops, beauty shops, tailors, and shoe repairs should be allowed as permitted uses. A limited range of related low-intensity commercial uses could also be allowed with a use permit, and this is implemented by the LB4 district. LB4 zoning classification allows banks, offices including medical, veterinary hospitals and clinics provided there are no outdoor activities, and these uses are limited to a building not exceeding 10,000 square feet in gross-floor area. SUP uses in the LB4 are churches, nursing homes, and assisted-living facilities, and buildings with a gross-floor area exceeding 10,000 square feet with the uses I mentioned previously. Use is not exceeding 2,000 square feet with SUP are office supply stores, pharmacies, and printing and photocopying shops. So that's the Wright 199 Jamestown Road, and I do have one speaker. Mr. Getty, Vernon Getty?
I'm Chairman, Members of the Commission. I'm Vernon Getty. I'm actually here today on behalf of me and my sister, who own the property at 530 Milneck Road, which is shown as the... With the big office up on Milneck Road there. That piece of property is directly behind my law office, which is in the corridor commercial piece right there at the intersection. We worked for several years with RJF and Associates, you probably know Bob Singley, looking at that piece of property, and the conclusion is it's really not a viable office site. It has very limited visibility. Its main access is off Milneck Road, and it's just not viable for a developer, and we're not developers, to come in and try to build office in that location. Our suggestion and our request would be to change the designation on that parcel to a medium-density residential. We think you could do a very nice, small, lot subdivision there that would create an equally good transition from the corridor commercial piece where our office is to the residential area immediately behind there, the homes on Colane and Milneck Road. And so we would ask you to consider that. We would, of course, this would be step one, have to develop an actual plan and come back and rezone the property. It is zoned LB4 now, so the city would have an opportunity to review the details of the plan and see exactly what was proposed, but our request would be to change it to a medium-density residential classification. So thank you very much.
Anyone else would like to speak on that section? Okay, moving on. John Tyler Lane.
Carolyn?
Mm-hmm. You want to come? Yeah, come on up. Come up.
This slide here, this LB4, where specifically is that? Is that where Strawberry Plains turns off, or is that?
No. This is the CVS and Mr. Getty's law office here, and that area is behind his law office. This is Milneck Road. So if you come down Milneck Road by the professional center, it comes to this cul-de-sac at the end.
Okay.
So Strawberry Plains, I think, is on the next leg.
Okay.
Two up. This one here is John Tyler Lane, which is basically the professional drive. As you can see, it's in an office use in the comp plan, and in zoning, it's a planned unit of development. So when that was developed, it was basically... So when that was developed, it was basically developed as office use only, and it has a strict selection of uses that can go in there that was put on the development as part of the PUD. The LB4 uses are the same as I mentioned previously, and the B2 CZ that you see up there is that went and got specific zoning for B2 for, there used to be a pharmacy in there, and it was to allow that pharmacy only to be located in there. So that is probably something we need to look at and change the zoning classification to match the other areas since the pharmacy is no longer located in there.
So is that the plot, that's the brick building right at the corner?
Yes. Anybody like to speak on that area? Yeah, I broke these ones down a little more than what you saw on the agenda because you can't get all the, you can't see what areas they are if you make it in one big, long one. So Strawberry Plains Road. Strawberry Plains Road is from John Tyler to Ironbound Road. You can see on the comp plan, you've got the economic development, and you've got an office use down at the very bottom. On the right, you'll see the LB4 district, which is a zoning classification. The other areas that you see economic development are shown as yellow, which is residential currently, and the reason they're shown as yellow is because the comp plan recommends changing the zoning to economic development if a plan that comes in and meets the design standards that I mentioned previously. So you get to look at the scale, the character, the buildings, and those types of things as part of the rezoning. So with that, I don't have any speakers cards for that. Would anyone like to speak on that area? Ironbound Road. Ironbound Road is another one that you'll see the comp plan say economic development, and the zoning is actually RS2 and William &amp; Mary. That property that's RS2 used to have houses in that area. Those houses have now been torn down, and the William &amp; Mary has purchased that property. So the intent from the comp plan is for they have another economic development area in there because it's across from Newtown on Ironbound Road. We think that that's a good area for redevelopment, and the zoning just shows the existing zoning for that area. And I don't have any comments cards for that. Would anyone like to speak on that area? Seeing none? I guess we just open it up for discussion if anybody would like to speak on any topic.
Thank you.
Happy for you to come up.
We've had a whirlwind tour of the entire city in 32 minutes, 32 hours that we had originally planned, and I see many people who are here in chambers who are representing other parts of the city that, well, other interest areas potentially than were directly addressed in Carolyn's presentation, and other parts of the city that there are in business but were not part of these business districts. So we are interested in hearing from any citizen as well as anyone from any business area, so if anyone wants to come.
I'm Debbie Keen. Live at 718 Jamestown Road. We own a Williamsburg White House B&amp;B. I didn't plan to speak, I really wasn't sure what the forum was, but since nobody else, and you looked very lonely, I figured I'd better say something. The only thing I have to say is I think that you guys are doing a tremendous job, and we were involved with the comp plan 10 years ago. So we're going to take a backseat this time, but if you are going to address anything in regards to B&amp;Bs in the comp plan this year, we certainly would love a little flexibility now that Air B&amp;Bs are allowed in residential homes. Maybe you can look at opening up the restrictions on licensed, legal B&amp;Bs in town. There's, the only restriction that really thwarts any of us from growing our business is basically one line on our regulations, which says that you can only do six rooms if you are on one acre of property or more. Everyone else is restricted to four. I think with the current guidelines that are in place through zoning and building and ARB, that there's not many people that would be allowed to even do more than six rooms based on those regulations. So I think if the six rooms was erased and the acre was erased and people were allowed based on the current footprint of their property and their building to be able to expand their current room rentals, meeting all the requirements that we meet now, fire code, zoning, health department, the entire thing, I think it would give us more flexibility, yet still making it very simple for you guys to let us do that. The regulations are already in place. It's that one sentence that restricts anybody from being able to expand their business. Thank you.
Doors open, and we have plenty of time. If there are other comments, as Deb was talking about, other parts of the comp plan that we've addressed but aren't addressing specifically today, this is a time for us to receive information from you. It's not a discussion time for us, but if you have other needs, or if there's anything else in the comp plan that we also need. But we will conclude our, you know, end our discussion on today's business public forum. Does anyone on the commission have anything? Carolyn, it didn't look like we had anything on our agenda for July, our regular hearing, is that true?
Yes, staff would like to propose we take the July regular meeting and have a work session for that meeting in the following week, so we have two work sessions in July since we don't have anything for the regular agenda. We're going to try to bring three, possibly four draft chapters to you at those two meetings if that's acceptable to the commission.
So we use our times?
We'll use our times.
We use our times, but our regular hearing time with a public announcement, all that will not be announced as a hearing but as a work session.
Right. What I propose to do is do the work session, if it's okay with the commission, at four o'clock, like we normally do our work sessions, and label it as a work session instead of a regular meeting, and just put a note to say that the regular meeting's canceled, and do one for the regular day in the following week also.
Both at four o'clock?
Both at four o'clock.
Both at four o'clock.
Four to six.
Okay.
Caleb, did you have?
No, that works with me. Thank you for everyone who spoke today.
Yes, thank you for, there's a lot of folks who are here, for those people who are watching on TV, and I know that there always are, and so even though there were a lot, very many people came forward, at least it was a good representation from the community here in the room, and with that, we are done. Thank you.
Thank you.